All right, we're ready to begin. My name's Joan Woodard and I'm the hearing examiner this evening. The purpose of this hearing is to allow me to receive evidence and testimony on the matters that are pending. I make a recommendation only to the county commissioners. I do not make the final decision. I will be submitting my recommendation to staff within the next two weeks of this evening's hearing. The application will then be scheduled for deliberations before the county commissioners. If you wish to give testimony, I need you to fill out one of the sheets in the back, and when you come to the podium, please remember to give your name and address for the record before you begin your testimony. First, staff will introduce the application, then we will hear from the applicant. After the applicant's testimony, we will then get into public comment sheets. We will hear from those who are in favor, those who are neutral, and then those who are opposed. The public not speaking will be read into the record. We will then give the applicant and/or their representative an opportunity for rebuttal of any testimony stated into the record from the public before we close the public hearing. After that point, we will receive no more testimony. The time limits are 30 minutes for the applicant's presentation, three minutes for public testimony, and 15 minutes for applicant rebuttal. I would ask that you direct all of your testimony to me and not to the audience. Are there any questions regarding these proceedings? If not, we will move forward with our first case of the evening, which is case number APP 25-0001.
Good evening, Madam Hearing Examiner. As you may or may not know, the audio record for the first hearing was incomplete, which has thus prompted us to have a second hearing tonight for the appeal by David Rosconi, which is an appeal of administrative decision by the director. So for the order of this presentation, I will introduce the appeal, then will turn it over to the appellant, who will provide their case in chief, along with any testimony or evidence in support of the appellant. I will then present the county's case in chief, along with any testimony or evidence in support of the county, and then allow for the appellant to rebut. So the appeal is for a minor subdivision taking place on a property on the east side of downtown Coeur d'Alene. The subject property is off French Gulch Road and is approximately 11, 10 or 11 acres in the rural zone. As you can see, the subject property is currently developed with a residence and a couple accessory As I mentioned before, the subject property is zoned rural and is surrounded by other properties also zoned rural. The surrounding properties do vary in size from about three acres up to about 20 or The original approval by the director was for a two-lot minor subdivision. Both lots exceed the five-acre minimum for the rural zone. Both lots would share a common driveway and be serviced by individual wells and individual Through the course of proceedings, the original subdivision was approved on March 24th. The appellant submitted a notice of appeal on April 21st. This was first brought before you on June 19th. Again, as I mentioned, the audio record for that first hearing was incomplete, thus prompting us to rehear for tonight. The appellant will soon present his case in chief, but a high-level overview, the appellant has made the claim that the groundwater quantity report does not have factual data to support it. The geotechnical analysis should have been required at the time of subdivision application. The applicant believes that because the land has some potential hazards, that the county has ignored that section of the code, and believes that the general approval of the two-lot minor subdivision is not compatible with the surrounding area, and it requests a couple modifications to that. During the, or prior to the first hearing, we did receive one public comment in support of the appeal. As a part of this second hearing, we did receive one public comment during the public comment period. We also received a second late comment that's already been entered into the record, but I will hand that to you as well.
Thank you. Entered into the record is HE 1001.
Both comments provided for this second hearing were in support of the appellant. I stand for any questions. If no questions are presented, I will let the appellant present their case in chief, along with any testimony or evidence supporting the appellant.
It's fine.
Who said that?
Oh.
Madam Hearing Examiner, if I may?
Yes, please.
David Callahan, Community Development Director. Just for the audience's sake and for the record, I believe we should treat this as a de novo hearing, meaning it's starting from the beginning, as if there was no hearing in the past.
Sounds good.
Thank you. I have a question.
You need to come up, and if it has anything to do with, you're just having a question regarding the county's presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Steve Gotcher, 6581 East French Gulch Road. On your map, you do not show the two houses that are on this proposed subdivision that are there right now. Why do you not have the two houses that are on there right now?
So to answer the question, the plot here only shows the proposed features. The part of the applicant's subdivision, there is a built features map. It wasn't included in this presentation, but is a part of the record of the minor subdivision.
There is a barn that was being used.
I need you to come to the microphone if you're going to ask a question.
It was a barn that was being used as a barn, but there had been two homes, a trailer home mobile, I don't know what you call them, two houses on wheels that have been planted on that proposed subdivision, and you do not have those two houses on your map, in addition to the barn that was there originally. I'm asking why you do not have three buildings on that property which are there right now? It's not current.
I think he's answered the question, that it's included in the case file online, but not in this particular presentation. From this visual, you can see some of it.
Correct, and I believe the question refers to two RVs that may be on site. That is a... If they're on wheels, the county code does view them as RVs, not homes.
But they're not on wheels, they've been jacked up off the ground, they're permanent structures now.
If they are permanent residences, I have no record of them as of yet, but we can look into that.
Okay, but, okay. All right. Appellant's testimony, please.
I'm Dave Rosconi, 5729 East French Gulch Road, the appellant, and I have a handout for you.
I'll give it to you.
One for the examiner, one for the clerk, please.
Read into the record is HE 1002.
My appeal of the Community Development Board's approval of subdivision Min. 24031, 0031, is based on the following errors and omissions made by the Development Department. Number one, the Code 8.6.302B8A, groundwater reports submitted to the county dated July 19th, 2024, does not support factual data that the proposed new well will provide sufficient drinking water to the subdivision and will not negatively affect the quantity of water to nearby property owners. In this report, written by Quantum Engineering, page three, paragraph two, recharge to the shale occurs by direct infiltration of precipitation through surface soil recharge from overlying basalt formation, if present. No evidence is presented to support this claim that groundwater recharge is occurring in any significant quantity, nor from what direction or source. The author is wrong to state that the shale, that's our Pritchard shale, which is probably one to two million years old sedimentary rock, is being recharged from the overlying basalt, which would be 10 to 20-plus million years old. It doesn't make sense. He's got his rock formations wrong. Quantum, page three, paragraph five, hydraulic conductivity is the ability to transmit water through the aquifer. Representative values of hydraulic conductivity for fractured igneous and metamorphic rock, I'll read that again, fractured igneous and metamorphic rock ranges from a tiny amount 000846 feet per day to 84.6 feet per day, per his citing Domenico, 1990. And then he gives an average hydraulic conductivity of 42.3 feet per day. What? Oh, sorry. Did I wake you up? He gives no basis for the 42.3, it's just an average. This report assumes an average value of hydroconductivity in fractured, again, igneous and metamorphic rock, but not in the Pritchard shale where our French Gulch wells are located, and does not offer any basis for using this average. I go through a calculation in one of my wells to show actually how fast the water's moving, and I come up with a value of 2.8 feet per day. That's 1/15th the velocity that the quantum report guesses at. Quantum, page three, paragraph four, production range from 1 half gallon per minute to 40 gallon per minute, with typical production of 5 to 20 gallon per minute in new wells. It must be understood, these production rates were noted by the driller for a very short time and immediately after drilling the well. Following comment, quantum, page three, paragraph seven, the well serving the parent parcel is located near the existing residence. The well, Schmidt, former owner, produces 28 gallons per minute, and the location was revised based on the well identification tag. To be conservative, the two nearest wells to the newly proposed lot would be the residence on the east, that's mine, and the west side of the subject parcel. Approximate distance from the center of a proposed lot to the southern half of the subject property to those residents are 600 and 750 feet respectively. Now claiming, this is my note, claiming the Schmidt well produces 28 gallons per minute in present tense is absolutely false. This well was drilled in 2008 and was tested by the driller at that time for just one and one-half hours with a quote "estimated production of 28 gallons per minute." Every well in this area that we have records of shows a tremendous reduction in GPM production and static height over time, and I give the data on my domestic and irrigation wells and how much static height has been lost in my wells. Further, the claim that approximate distance from the center of a proposed lot to east and west residents is intentionally misleading. The center of the proposed lot is not usable due to a high-pressure natural gas pipeline bisecting the property. In fact, the new well could be located as close as 280 feet to my existing well. Quantum, page four, paragraph one, the influence of one well was estimated using a hypothetical distance of 600 feet to the nearest well. Using the Theus equation, citing Cooper, 1946, an average hydraulic conductivity of 42 and a half feet per day, again, a bogus number he drummed up, a conservative aquifer thickness of five feet, and one home pumping at a rate of 1.05 GPM predicts a drawdown on the hypothetical well of .4 feet after one year of pumping and .58 feet after 10 years. The influence appears to be very minor and not be considered significant unless it exceeds 10 to 20 feet. As previously, my comment has previously shown, the assumption made by Quantum of 42 and a half feet per day is incorrect when at more correct value of 2.8 feet per day. Further, the assumption of a 600-foot distance to the nearest well is in question. The influence would not be considered significant unless it exceeds 10 to 20 feet is not correctly dimensioned, nor is the basis for this value explained. Quantum possibly means 10 to 20 feet drawdown in static height in 10 years. In fact, my domestic well has lost 73 feet of static height in 46 years, that's 18 and a quarter feet, and my irrigation well has lost 109 feet of static height in 20 years, that's 54 and a half feet. Per Quantum's assessment, we already have a significant problem with loss of static height of groundwater without any additional wells in the area. Quantum says, page four, paragraph seven, well yield in the shale varies, and yields of 5 to 20 gallon per minute should be expected. And I'm saying yields of 5 to 20 gallons per minute may be obtained only with luck and only for a short time immediately after drilling. Note, Quantum, page three, paragraph four, states a new well giving 1 half gallon per minute, which is what happened in one of the cases up there. Quantum, page five, paragraph two, it is unlikely that interference to existing wells will occur from one proposed domestic well on the new parcel. The estimated interference is minor and less than one foot. Given the five-plus acre size and low surrounding housing/well density, interference to off-site wells is unlikely. Again, Quantum has failed to properly dimension a unit, less than one foot, but the implication is there will be interference to adjacent wells contrary to their conclusion. Quantum, page six, paragraph one and two, this evaluation relied on the experience of Quantum regarding developmental water in the area and formations described above. This evaluation did not include test drilling nor test pumping of wells in the vicinity. The estimated influence on wells, adjacent wells, is based on average literature values for hydraulic parameters for similar foundations, formations, and estimated well separations. The estimated influence is based on isotropic aquifer conditions and having infinite aerial extents and cannot incorporate unknown site-specific variations. This evaluation did not consider impacts of climate change, future wells drilled in the vicinity, nor impacts associated with excessive usage by newer existing wells in the vicinity. This is my statement, this is a broad disclaimer, that no actual data was used to develop the conclusions presented. Even a simple four-hour test of the existing well on the subject property would given a dose of reality to the report preparer in regard to the declining flow rates and static heights in the wells in this area. And now, I have what you might say is the Perry Mason reveal. Here, take one to the clerk, one to the examiner, please. I reviewed the...
Read into the record is HE 1003, thank you.
My review of the developer submissions to the Development Department and correspondence files of the Development Department have revealed why the quantum report is completely incompetent. This report was prepared, this report was prepared for different development at another location, and if you look at what I just handed you, there's a July 11th report on the top. It was first submitted by the developer and dated July 11th. The Development Department requested clarification on August 26, 27, and 30th, 2024, and was furnished a revised report dated July 19th, 2024. That's the report which my previous comments referenced. The July 19th report references the correct location but retains the references to the igneous and metamorphic water-bearing rock and the data and formulas for the other development location. Incredibly, the Development Department on August 30th only requested of the developer as follows, I quote, "References parcel, that is approximately 17.9 acres and three-lot minor, but map shows correct subject parcel approximately 11 acres. This information needs to be consistent. I can accept an amended page to the report that addresses/corrects the error and is stamped by the professional geologist that did the original report," end of the quote. Note that the Development Department did not request any correction to the technical details of the report. Code 8.6.302B8E, if necessary, to demonstrate compliance, the director may require additional information such as historic and current static waters, static water levels in the area. The following is a report prepared by Robert Haynes, PE, regional manager, department, Idaho Department of Resources, Water Resources, retired, covering the groundwater conditions in the one-half-mile area surrounding the proposed subdivision. This report should have been requested by the director as part of community development's due diligence. I'm going to ask Bob to make some comments on his report, and I want my neighbors who are present to pay attention to Bob's comment as this matter goes beyond this hearing and this subdivision. Bob, would you say a couple of words?
My name is Robert Haynes. I reside at 2571 South Reynolds Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, 83814. I think one of the things that I want to emphasize here is the fact that the community development staff does not have anyone who is qualified to make judgments about the competency of the groundwater reports that have been submitted. At least, that's my understanding. I've had some contact with Mr. Callahan and his staff. I think the important thing to look at here is not the question of whether or not that individual well will have an impact on other wells in there. What we're seeing in that area is a precipitous decline of groundwater levels in the area. There's text in the report that I submitted that talks about the depth to which people have had to drill. Over 55 years, the average depth of drilling has declined over 500 feet. And to me, that is an indication of a groundwater system that is in serious distress. My personal feeling is that we likely are in a situation where the recharge to that system is being exceeded by the amount of water that's being pumped from the existing I can't make that statement with any degree of professional certainty because there isn't any information that exists to demonstrate what sort of relationship exists between the amount of recharge that is occurring and the amount of water that's being pumped. But certainly, the information that I have been able to get from Dave and from neighbors shows that wells that have had more than one data point taken, every last one of them shows a decline both in the groundwater levels and the amount of water that those wells are capable of pumping. Some of them right now are down to the point where if a person were to try to sell that property, I'm not sure that they could meet the requirements of the lending institutions for the amount of water that you have to supply within a... for the amount of water that you have to supply within a four-hour period. I think that probably covers the things that I wanted to say. There's more detail in the report, and I would encourage you to take a look at that.
Read into the record is HE 1004. Reba, how much time do we have left? Don't want you--
I didn't hear that, please.
You have 13 minutes left on your timeframe.
Code 8.6.302B12, "A geotechnical analysis is required as part of the subdivision application if there is a water table within six feet of ground surface at any time of the year. This requirement has been waived until time of development on Lot 2, thus pushing it past the deadline for appeal and denying outside review." I'll have more to say on rebuttal. 8.6.702A, "No land shall be subdivided because of potential hazards such as high-pressure gas lines..." dot, 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 "unless the hazards are eliminated or adequately mitigated. The proposed subdivision is bisected by two high-pressure gas and a petroleum pipeline. Owing to the layout of the lot, the proposed lot, the high-pressure gas pipeline will be in close proximity to the construction site of a new house and etc. No mention or concern was shown by the director in his order of decision on 3/24/25 in regard to this obvious hazard. The hazard must be addressed." Code 8.6.706A, "Subdivision shall be designed to be compatible with existing homes, businesses, and neighborhoods, and with the natural characteristics of the area. To achieve this, the board may require building envelopes, no disturbance zones, height restrictions, and planning a retention of vegetation." There's nowhere on the resulting roughly two-and-a-quarter-acre subdivision where a house may be located that will be compatible with existing homes. The neighboring houses' distance to my house is Schmidt 482, Mitchell 597, Wood 592, Hanson 501, Holland 954, and Robinson 582 feet. None of these houses are in the direct view of each other, and it is within this code to expect a similar setback for any new lot in the area. That would require a minimum 250-foot building setback from the east side of the proposed lot. Code 8.6.706B, "Lot design. Subdivisions must result in lots of reasonable utility and livability. Subdivision designs shall not contain irregular configurations that result in unusable land or that may cause future conflict. The proposed lot is," my comment, "the proposed lot is bisected by two high-pressure natural gas and petroleum pipelines, reducing the possible building site to just two-and-a-quarter acres in which a house, barn, well, septic, driveway, etc. need to fit. As a result of the pipeline locations, there is approximately three acres out of the five or five-and-a-half acres of unusable land. And the only possible building site is to the west directly in front of my house." Subdivisions 8.6.708B says, "Subdivisions and view sheds, mountain and water views and vistas are an important part of the character of Kootenay County, contributing to the visual quality of the area, increasing property values, attracting visitors, and enhancing the desirability and livability of the community. As such, it is in the public interest that land be developed in a manner that is visually unobtrusive, environmentally responsible, and is compatible with the character of the area. Any new building," my comment, "any new building on the proposed site will be contrary to the section of the code. And attached, I've made photos, attached or photoshopped pictures from my friend Porch at a 50-foot setback from the east side of proposed lot, at 20- and 35-foot height restriction, and again, a 250-foot setback with 20- and 35-foot height setback. Scratch out with a 20- and 35-foot height limitation. Note that the damage, to my view, cannot be mitigated by moving the building site to the south due to the location of the high-pressure gas and petroleum pipelines. Damage may be reduced by imposing a 250-foot setback and a 20-foot height limit on any building, but it's still visually intrusive. Note that my house, which I've given you a picture of, is just 20 feet high and lacks for nothing architecturally." And that's the end of my appeal, and I hope you'll see it my way to cancel the Development Department's approval. Thank you. I'll be back for rebuttal.
Okay.
Any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
So at this time, we can be taking--
Public testimony.
--in support of the appellate.
Okay. I have David Hanson, who is in favor of the appeal, who wishes to speak.
I'm David Hanson, 2852 North Country Lane. We moved into the area in the early 90s. We started out with approximately five gallons a minute on our well. And then, within not that many, a few years later, it started to dwindle. And we got down to where we were down around less than one gallon a minute. We had to haul water. We had to haul water in the winter. It was very difficult. We had Goodwell Companies, we had United Well that was helping us with our well, and their people that came out and worked on our property and worked on our well and tried to recover and tried to get us going again, they told us that all of the wells in that, in our area, started out around, I think they said maybe 120 or 120 feet or so deep, and everybody is drilling and going much deeper. We tried to have a well recovery company, a specialist, open up our well with their techniques, and we spent lots of money and had no results. And we finally ended up, after years of hauling water, we ended up drilling deeper. We had almost doubled, in fact, we doubled, probably more than doubled, the depth of our well, and just to get enough water to keep going. And so, my experience has been that the static water is dropping in our area, and that's been my experience.
Thank you. Sharon Risconee, in favor, does not wish to speak. Bob Haynes, in favor, wishes to speak. Stephen Kutcher, in favor, wishes to speak.
Hi. When I moved into my house in 2020, early January 2020, I was getting three gallons a minute out of my well. As of April of 2025, I'm down to one gallon a minute. And the water level has dropped from 60 feet down to 150 feet. And I can't survive on one gallon a minute. So, I asked for you to oppose the, or not allow the development to go in because we just simply don't have enough water to supply a lot of houses.
Okay. Thank you. Glenn Gatherer, in favor, wishes to speak.
Glenn Gatherer, 5496 East Pine Mountain Lane. I've lived out in French Gulch since about 1970 where my parents' house. And they first put in a well, we went down about 500 feet. We were getting about eight gallons a minute. Approximately 1973, '74, the well went dry. They had to put in a second well. We are now down over 700 feet. We are roughly pushing out right now three to three-and-a-half gallons a minute. Every time a new property came in, our wells went slower and slower and slower. So, we don't need another house out there. We were the first house to be built off of Pine Mountain Lane. And now, there's eight houses up there. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Montandon, in favor, wishes to speak. I apologize if I massacre anybody's names.
Really close.
Okay.
Montandon, so, yes. My experience has been similar with having water problems. I've lived there since 1980 when I was two years old. My dad was kind enough to give us some property. And so, I'm not actually even sure if it was 2018 or 2019, we drilled a well 260 feet. We had 30-plus gallons per minute, and that dwindled off. And a couple of years later, we were down to half a gallon a minute. And then, we put a reservoir in, and that still wasn't enough to meet our water needs for the household. So, we had to go down to 800 feet, which got us to five-and-a-half gallons per minute. And I don't even know if it's that now. If you come and look at my lawn right now, it's looking pretty crispy because we don't have sufficient water to pump out, even with the reservoirs to keep it green. So, my concern in the area would be to not have subdivisions. I think that, you know, growing up in that area, that's not what people move there for. And it's also very much a concern for the water. Whenever we see more people moving in, or my neighbor off to the west of us put in another well, it didn't help matters with our well. It's very difficult to prove that, but it did seem whether that was just time and what would have happened, or maybe we were tapped into the same vein. I don't know, but our water out there is not increasing, it's decreasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Stone Jarvelin, in favor, wishes to speak.
Hi, my name is Sheila Stone Jarvelin. I live at 4968 East French Gulch Road, Coeur d'Alene, 83814. I can skip a couple of my comments because all of these people have talked about the water issue. It is a serious issue. We have a natural pond on our property. It used to stay full year-round. It's been drying up over the last six years. It started drying up in September, then it started drying up in August, and June, or July, and now this year, it was in June, at the end of June. So, there are a lot of water issues up there, as you've heard. I also have a question. I am concerned about construction near the gas and petroleum lines. Is there a plan in case something goes awry? Is there an environmental impact statement that would talk about how to clean that up? How would that affect the little water that's left running on these people's property? And as for the character of the neighborhood, people live there because of the space, the elbow room, the wildlife, and to just, we don't want French Gulch to turn in to the Coeur d'Alene Prairie. The prairie is gone, and we still have a little piece of heaven up there. And just to keep having more and more, and I know aesthetic value doesn't mean a lot to a lot of people, but it does to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Clay Folds, in favor, wishes to speak.
My name is Clay Folda. We live at 5050 East French Gulch, just right across the street from what's happening here. I'm not here to make enemies with Val and Victoria. We welcome them to our neighborhood as, you know, we would welcome anybody, but the changing of plans and starting to develop our neighborhood into something that nobody wants is problematic. And number one is the water. If, I mean, I had a conversation with our new neighbor, Val, and I don't think he realizes how many trucks and trailers I watch go up and down French Gulch by my house daily hauling water. There's eight, 10, 12, not the one that I was told that there was. There's, you know, it's not just Dave hauling water, it's everybody here is hauling water. I have a 90-foot well. My neighbor just told me her 90-foot well has given her problems, and so, I'm going to be next. I don't want to have to go 3, 4, 800 feet down for a new well. I'd like to live the rest of my life out with our beautiful well that we have at our house just right downstream from this development. So, water's an issue, it's a huge one. And like, I just found out, if they puncture a gas line, my water is contaminated. Then I'm screwed. My property value goes from what it is now to who knows what I'll have to sell it for because you got to drill a $20,000 well to get some water up there. So, you know, what everybody here is saying about the water is, it's the real deal. And Val, you got to understand, this is our home. We're not looking for it to be developed. We would look to have somebody come in and live in the big, beautiful home up on the hill, leave the rest of it alone, which is a low-water area, goes, everything there, if there's a problem, it's going to go right down to my house. And we didn't move up there. You know, I'm an Idahoan. I mean, we didn't move up there to get run off by developments. We moved up there because we all had some nice elbow room. So, after I heard about the problems with how the development was going, and they sidestepped some stuff to make it go through a little quicker, I just called bullshit on it. For anybody that's in, that is involved in this, allowing it to go through to make it easier for them and their damn job, I called bullshit on it.
That was your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Chaffee, in favor, may wish to speak.
My name is Mike Chaffee. I live at 3600 Haley, North Haley Hill Road. And I really don't have a statement. I just have a couple of questions that I would like to have answered if possible. Once I heard about the subdivision, I drive by there every day, I'm by work. And there was a trailer that was there, and I assumed that was a Foreman trailer for a construction site. And I assumed that that was going to be a single home with a single family that was going to be put in there eventually. And now, there are two such trailers. They don't look like Foreman trailers. One has a nice wood-- One has a nice wood facade on the front. I've heard that possibly they are trailers meant for housing. I don't know if those are long-term rentals, short-term rentals, ownership, but there's two there. I as, and, and one of the county regulations I noticed said that whatever goes in there has to be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. And if that's what's going in, in there, it's not. So, the question I have is, is that going to be one mobile trailer, tiny home, is it gonna be two? Do the regulations say that it has to be a single-family dwelling at least on five acres, or can you have more than one dwelling on five acres? Or is it going to be a permanent standing home with one family? Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Chaffee in favor may wish to speak.
I live with the other Chaffee at thirty-six hundred Haley Hill Road in Coeur d'Alene. Um, the water is definitely an issue. Um, I don't know the number. We didn't know until very recently that all of this was going on. Uh, we've definitely noticed problems. Just this weekend, I got air coming out of my house faucets because we had a hose running. And, uh, the quality of the water also has a lot more sediment in it. And I've had well people come out and say, that's just what's happening out here. And then, when we moved there, we were told, in French Gulch, you had to have a minimum of ten acres unless you fronted French Gulch. And then you could divide it into five acres parcels if each one of them had a driveway coming off of French Gulch. And this is one driveway going to a subdivision and another home. And, I mean, how many places can you put off of the driveway on French Gulch and still have them be five acres? And then, as far as the, um, the neighborhood and the, the feeling of the neighborhood, I've, I've been calling it, and heard other people calling it, the ghetto trailer park. It's, and, and I've also heard they're VRBOs, and people will be coming in and out and renting, and, and, um, they previously had the main house as a VRBO, and it was a big problem for noise and stuff, uh, with the neighbors there. And trailers are just not North Idaho, not, not French Gulch. So, that's a major concern for me. And I feel like that would really decrease our property values, having a trailer park there.
Thank you. Connie Madison in favor may wish to speak.
My name is Connie Madison, and I live at fifty-eight oh three, East Sleepy Lane. Um, I wasn't aware of the, um, pipelines going through there. I would like to say, just at the get-go, I agree with what Sheila Stone said. I thought she said it very well, and I'm in complete agreement. Um, I have been in my home for fourteen years now, and when I first moved in, w- we are four houses on one well. And when I first moved in, the neighbors that had been on the well for a long time said, there are times when you'll have to turn off your reservoir, your cistern tank, so that we can get water. And, um, that particular family lived up the hill from the well, and they would get water last. So, in fourteen years, we probably turned off maybe five times until recently. This past two or three years, we've had to turn off more. There have been, um, four houses go in, not on my road, but down French Gulch Road, towards Fernand Hill Road, in the last few years. And I, there's also a well that was put in, uh, in twenty-twenty-two on traditional trell. And I feel that maybe the other houses that have gone in are impacting our well. So, the same thing that everybody's saying here, I'm hauling water now almost daily, and the amount of people living in my home isn't any different. So, I've been able to, in the past, water my backyard a little bit so that it at least looked a little bit green. I couldn't do that at all this year, and, and last year. So, um, anyway, I think there's a real problem with the water supply up there. And, um, I, I don't think, I, I don't care for the look of the subdivision thing. The, um, two units that are on the property there, they do look like trailer houses. I'm not sure about what the county's calling an RV, but they're on wheels. I don't believe they're at all in keeping with the, the nature and the atmosphere of that area. I, I disapprove completely on that style of dividing up property. I mean, pretty soon are we gonna, everybody up there is gonna have an R, those kind of RVs scattered around their property then? So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Paul True in favor does not wish to speak. John Montandon in favor does not wish to speak. Sandy Norskog in favor does not wish to speak. Laurel Kutchen in favor doesn't say whether you wish to speak or not.
No, thank you.
Okay. Jeff Norskog in favor doesn't say whether you wish to speak or not. Thank you. Carol Folda in favor doesn't say whether you wanna speak or not. No? Okay. Kathleen Doran, neutral, doesn't say whether you want to speak or not.
I'm in favor. I checked in favor.
Um, hmm, you might have missed the wrong, the, I can change it. So, you're in favor. Do you wish to speak or not? Okay. Ed Leider, neutral, may wish to speak.
Ed Leider, sixty-four eighty-four, East Sleepy Lane, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And I put neutral because I'm here to learn about what was going on. I had heard a few things. Um, based on what I've heard, I am now in favor, um, of the appellant. And, um, I agree, if you look at our groundwater, not only, um, up in French Gulch, um, they're saying that the Rathram Mountain is having the same problems we're having. You read the newspaper, and the Aquifer is having the same problem in Washington and Idaho. So, this is a regional problem that we're dealing with and needs to be addressed, um, before we continue to develop and overdevelop all these parcels. Thank you.
Thanks. Val Rybank, Rybank, opposed, wishes to speak. You're the, wait, nope. Sorry, we'll get to you later. Do we have call-ins?
Have the lines open if there are. I'm not hearing anybody. Don't believe we have anybody online.
Okay, then we now move to the county.
All right. All right, before I get into my presentation, I do wanna address a couple of comments that were made. There we go. Um, regarding the trailers on site, or, uh, RVs, or what have you, the county does not have any record of these structures. Um, so I've gotta defer that to the applicant of the subdivision, Val, um, to kinda describe what they are. I will say, um, if the, um, uh, tiny homes, if you wanna call them that, are on wheels with the license plate, um, those are considered RVs per the land use code, um, and are to be used intermittently, um, and cannot be rented out. So, if that is the case in which that is occurring, um, that, that would be a violation of the code, and that would need to be corrected. Moving forward, though, um, to reiterate, the appellant is seeking a reversal of the original minor subdivision that was approved. Um, starting with the groundwater quantity report, uh, the county does recognize that water is a serious issue, is why we require a report from a professional geologist to be submitted during the application process. Um, I myself, nor anyone else out the county, is a professional geologist, so we are relying on the information that they do provide in those reports. Um, the report that was provided was stamped by James Smith, the professional geologist, who based his analysis on forty-three well logs within the one-half mile radius, which is compliant with the code standard. The groundwater quantity report is to demonstrate, the purpose of it is to demonstrate the feasibility of water, um, and their influence on the surrounding area. Um, unfortunately, we can't require updated pump tests be done, um, as a lot of this, as a lot of the wells in the area, the well logs were based on pump tests that were done when the wells were installed. So, again, the information that is provided to us and that's made publicly available is varying in date. Um, so, based on the best data that we have available, and based on the analysis provided by the professional geologist, um, it is our opinion that water has been demonstrated feasibly. Of course, we have required, as a part of the approval, that before any certificate of occupancy be issued for any new residents, that a, um, pump test that meets the minimum standard of five gallons per minute for four hours with a minimum of fifteen hundred gallons per day be required, or the engineered storage must be installed and must be proven prior to issuance of that CO. With regard to the geotechnical analysis, uh, the code states that a geotechnical analysis may be required. It does provide discretion. Um, the reason that this, um, came up is that the, uh, water table in the area, um, is quite high. The reason that we deferred the requirement of the, um, geotechnical analysis is we believe it'd be more appropriate to have a geotechnical analysis that actually addresses the type of development that will be going on, on Lot Two. Um, that way, we can know the exact location and type of development, and that way, the analysis and recommendations can be more appropriate. With regard to the, um, potential hazards on site, as aforementioned, there are several pipelines that cross the property. After speaking with representatives from the agencies that govern those pipelines, um, Avista, and I'm sorry, my eyesight is not the great, greatest, Avista expressed that the easement, um, provided, oh goodness. So, when requesting co- additional comment from these agencies, we did request if they have, um, any concerns about development on that property. Um, the easement, um, for Avista, uh, hasn't expressed easement width, and they provided no concern about development on the property or near that pipeline. Yellowstone, um, did not have any concerns about development near their pipeline, but recommended a fifty-foot buffer. And Williams Company, um, has a blanket easement, so no defined width in their easement language, but uses an assumed, uh, twenty-foot right-of-way width, um, as referenced in one of their instrument numbers. With this, the remaining built area of the Lot Two that encu- that the, uh, pipelines encumber still leaves about, uh, two acres north of the Williams Pipeline, about one acre between Williams Pipeline and the southern of Avista Pipelines for development. Um, with this, staff recommends adding these recommendations for widths and buffers to be added to the conditions of approval on the face of plat. That way, the applicant, as well as future property owners, know no development is allowed near these pipelines. Um, with regard to compatibility to the area, um, the applicant, or the appellant, I'm sorry, um, asserts that the character of the area could be maintained if a setback of two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the eastern property line is kept, and at the building height, um, not exceed twenty feet. Um, our position is that the surround, there are several parcels in the surrounding area that vary in size, some of which below the minimum lot size, and five acres would be compatible with the surrounding areas, uh, surrounding parcels. Um, the area does consist primarily of single-family residences, which is what I believe will be proposed on the new lots created. Um, staff believes that the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback from the eastern property line is unreasonable, um, as existing developments in the vicinity, um, including the appellant's, do not actually meet such setback. In working with the applicant through this process, um, I did raise concerns, um, uh, let me back up. Dave Rosconi did meet with staff during the processing of this application, um, concerning, um, views being obstructed. Um, those were passed along to the applicant of the subdivision. Um, in trying to work with the appellant, they did, um, shorten the common driveway to reduce the amount of traffic passing in front of the appellant's residence, as well as imposing a, um, thirty-five-foot height restriction on structures on Lot Two, or both lots, I'm sorry. And, so as such, staff believes, um, that the, uh, process and standards of the code have been met, um, that the appeal should be denied, and the decision of the director to approve the minor subdivision be affirmed. And I stand for any questions.
The, um, appellant, in his writings, said that, um, uh, maintains that the pipeline easements are unusable, but they only need to not have structures on them. Is that right?
Correct.
So, they're usable for gardens and plants and whatever?
That is my understanding, based on the comments received from representatives of the companies governing that. Their only concern was that they don't want structures over them.
Yeah. And, um, um, my memory's not working very well, but with a subdivision in this area, it's a single-family home that's permitted with accessory buildings?
Correct. So, I should clarify, the rural zone does allow, for five acres, a two-family residence plus one accessory living unit, for a total of three residences on the property. As such, the current zone and size of the property would allow for an additional residence, uh, through the permitting process.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. And then I, uh, will remand to anyone in, in support of the county.
Okay. Okay.
Question?
Um, would you, all right, come, come up and state your name and the, for the record again, and address.
Sheila Stone Jarvelin, uh, four nine six eight, East French Gulch Road. So, um, I can see, like, like, you know, it's probably gonna happen, but I still have concern about those pipelines. And is there an environmental impact statement that will address any, uh, catastrophe that could happen there, which could wipe out wells that are already failing? So, where is the information of who would mitigate such a disaster if it were to happen? Because I think it's a good idea to plan for that, and I would like to see the plan that will mitigate that situation should it arise. There should at least be a plan.
Thank you. We're gonna have that addressed by the, um, Director of the Department right now.
Thank you.
Okay?
Madam Hearing Examiner, David Callahan, Community Development Director. The pipeline owners...
I can't really hear him.
David Callahan, Community Development Director for Cootney County. The owners of the pipeline routinely drill on catastrophes and the, and the mitigation response to those. They work with the... They work with the Sheriff's Department on a routine and regular basis to ensure that there is incident command in place in case of any such catastrophe. However, everyone should please note that Idaho law and local law does not allow us to do environmental assessments. You can blame that on your state legislature. That's my editorial comment. I hope you'll pardon me for that, but it's just the way facts are in this state.
Thank you. And now rebuttal by our appellant. Yes, no?
We still need to hear from anyone in support of the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Do we have anyone in support of the county's rebuttal or presentation? I don't have any...
I believe the applicant of the subdivision is here, Val.
Okay.
If he wishes to speak.
Val.
Property 5655 East French Gulch Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho 83814. So, we moved to this property about a month ago, 25655, but it's been my property for about a year now, year and a half. We lived on property 5049, East French Gulch Road, that's about three lots away, four lots. So, let's resolve the tiny homes that are on the property. They are not in ground, so I had to move them from 5655, I mean, 5049 property, which nobody ever saw them because we had trees. Same as I don't know what else the neighbors have in their properties, maybe they have extra houses or anything on their properties, you just don't know. Because this property has a big field, I think this is why we're having this big conversation about covering view and everything. I know the concern about the water. We just did a well test before we sold the property, and we were pushing 30 gallons per minute on 5049 East French Gulch Road. And that was a month ago. So, I don't know what else, what the concerns were. If I'm covering the view, Dave's house is actually kind of sitting sideways, which he would see a little bit of the house, and he's sitting a lot higher, to where he will see the house, but it's from the side. And I had a couple well companies come out. They said, Val, if you want to get the best results for your water, you have to just drill at the lower part. And this is exactly where we had the well on 5049, and we had great results. So, that's where I'm gonna be putting the second well when we get our development going. Tiny homes, that's not for, that's, they're standing there because we sold that property, we moved them here. That is my office slash, like, job site office when we're gonna be breaking ground, that one that's standing right on the property line. The second one that I have there, that's my sauna steam room. This is, we use it usually in the winter. I used it on that property, nobody saw it because we had trees, and we used it as a steam room, but it's a, they're considered as RVs, they're on wheels, they're not in ground. So, they're not for rent. They were built, like, one of them is a, is a office, and one of them is a sauna steam room. That's what they were built for. So, with water, I did have a couple of companies come out, and they did mention that you guys are sitting on levels where you have a rock, and you have, so everybody has their own, it could be, you could be sharing aquifers with other neighbors, or you could be share, or you could be sitting on your own aquifer. And I did see some logs, I went to the water district, they showed me logs of how much some of these are, the depths on them, 300, there is 300, there's actually some that are 75 feet and producing 12 gallons per minute. And some are pushing 350 feet and are producing also 15-ish, 7-ish. So, there is water, but we do have a lot of people here that are concerned about water, but the drillers that were on site, they said that you can extend, drill deeper. Mine, I think, on this one is 300 feet. They said if you add another 50 to 100 feet, you should be pushing very well. And so, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any call-ins?
Can we call in? Can we call it one more time?
Do we have anyone who'd like to call in and comment on the county's rebuttal? Okay. Then back to appellant's rebuttal.
One technical point I wanted to make was the quantum report, this, I'm kind of backing up before I get to my rebuttal. Quantum report, July 19th, that's the somewhat corrected in that it only shows the correct location, shows 41 wells within a half-mile. Some of those actually dropped out, it's fewer than 41 shown in his report. Bob Haynes' report shows 65 wells, much higher density of wells in our area up there. Onto my rebuttal. The Development Department has accepted the unsupported conclusions in the quantum report without regard to the technical defects in the report. And keep in mind, you have to have a report per the code, and this report doesn't substantiate the, that requirement. As shown in my narrative, this report does not support the conclusions drawn from the text and is actually written for a different subdivision. The hydraulic conductivity assumed in the wrong rock formation is wildly inaccurate. Further, our well depletion here in French Gulch already exceeds the unreferenced and incompletely dimensioned one foot per year of static height in the wells that is claimed by quantum to be, quote, "considered significant." The quantum report simply does not support with competent technical basis the requirements of Code 8.6.302.B8. I'm gonna read that again. The quantum report simply does not support with competent technical basis the requirements of Code 8.6.302.B8. It's game over. It's obvious the Development Department has no ability to understand the information, including errors and omissions in a technical report. Their request for only a minor location change encouraged the bogus July 19th quantum report that was submitted and brings into question the department's core competency, motivation, and bias for the developer. Further, Code 8.6.302B8E states, "If necessary to demonstrate compliance, the director may require additional information, such as historic and current static water levels in the area." Where is the director regarding protection of our water resource? The world wonders. The geotechnical analysis that was noted in my February 11th, 2025, letter to Callahan and was ignored by the Development Director until March 24th, '25. Fact is, the Development Department failed in error to require this report at the time of the subdivision application and is now dodging this requirement with semantics, quote, "may," emphasis added in parentheses by them, to say it would be, quote, "more appropriate at the time of development." By covering up their error, the Development Director is deliberately excluding this report from the appeal process, again bringing into question the department's competence and bias. The potential hazard that is defined in code as a high-pressure gas pipeline is not being mitigated in any significant way. Note that this issue was completely ignored until after my appeal was filed on April 21, 2025, and then only a token effort was made to mitigate the potential hazard by asking the pipeline operators what they want. The restrictions imposed by the Development Department after my appeal was filed inadequate and inconsistent, requiring a 50-foot development buffer from either side of the Phillips Pipeline and just 25 feet from the Williams Pipeline. Cootney County Code 8.6.702A is specific enough to be followed. No land shall be subdivided because of potential hazards such as ... dot-dot-dot, high-pressure gas lines unless the hazards are eliminated. By playing fast and loose with the code, the Development Department has again shown itself biased to the developer at the expense of public safety. Compatibility and mitigating impacts on the neighborhood. Staff analysis conclusion that the proposed development is indeed compatible with the surrounding neighborhood simply based on lot size ignores the character of the neighborhood. With 482 to 954-foot distances to my immediate neighbor's houses and lines of sight, a 250-foot setback from the east property line is necessary to remain compatible. I've given you photoshopped pictures in my narrative to show how much damage may be done to the, quote, "view shed" at a building height of 20 to 35 feet and a 50 to 250-foot setback. Why is the Development Department so willing to ignore code and act in favor of the developer? And a comment from my neighbor, Val, Val, you're right in front of my house. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're done, right? Unless you guys have something you need to add?
We have nothing to add unless you have any questions you'd like to ask us.
I have no further questions for staff.
Great.
David?
Madam Hearing Examiner, I'd like the audience to know that we have amended the code not too long ago to revise the standards by which we judge water assessment. That was at my request, and the commissioners agreed, and so the code that was charted out today is that revision. It's clear that it's imperfect, but I want you to know it was a valiant effort to make it better than what we had, which was pretty thin before. So, I commit to you that we will continue to evaluate these things. We will continue to try and amend and adjust the code to find ways to get better certainty on these things. But I will tell you, having spent a lifetime of doing development in seven municipalities, this is a hard nut to crack, because unlike Colorado, for instance, where I worked for 23 years, where it's easy to ascertain water areas and drawdowns, here we have fractured rock, as you know better than most, and that's nearly impossible to ascertain an absolute certainty of water. So, I'm open to suggestions, we can always reevaluate our code. It should be thought of as an element of the review process that can be amended over time. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a question about that. I think it's a valiant effort, and it has changed dramatically. I'm actually third generation from here, which is rare, but with all of the development, and I know, I mean, the whole world's gonna keep developing, I get that, so I'm not really opposed to that, but what would be the most appropriate way to have our particular situation evaluated, and what would be wrong with slowing things down until we have a better answer?
We have in this year's budget, money's appropriated for a rewrite of our comprehensive plan. The reason that's important for you to take away from tonight's meeting is that the comp plan for the county and for all municipalities sets policy for the growth and development of the community. That policy must be developed with the support and understanding of the community. It needs to reflect community aspirations. So, starting in October, we will be reaching out as part of our new comp plan update to address these issues. I ask your patience, because these kinds of efforts typically take years. Because there's a back and forth and a trial and error process. But to answer your question, the best way I know is to work it out through policy, get that adopted by, in this case, the county commissioners. Once the policy's set in place, the code can be updated accordingly. And with that broad spectrum approach throughout the entire county, we would not only be looking at your area, but all of the county. And yes, that could potentially slow down and guide and suggest how development can occur in a more reasoned, more steadied process.
Let the problems catch up with the expansion and maybe kind of just slow the bus down a little bit.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Mr. Val has stated he's can get 300, 100 gallons, whatever it was, and he says he can get from people who do not have any, they don't have any dog in the fight, they don't have a well, and they haven't tested the area that he wants to drill. So, he's doing estimates of how many hundreds of gallons a day he can pull out of that well, when his well only produces one gallon a minute, my well produces a gallon a minute, her well only produces, you know, 12 gallons, but that's for four people. My neighbor's well only is down 800 feet, and he only produces, you know, three gallons a minute. Mr. Muller drove a well 700 feet, and he's only getting three, three gallons a minute. My neighbor across the road has got a well 700 feet deep, he's only getting three gallons a minute. How does he get 30 gallons a minute from a non-well when everybody else in reality only gets maybe three? And my well is only producing one?
Well, I take it your statement is rhetorical, but...
No, it's reality.
No, what I mean is, I'm not gonna answer it. What I think you should take away from tonight is that all of the evidence has been adduced in the hearing. The Hearing Examiner will examine that and make a recommendation to the county commissioners. The county commissioners will ultimately make the decision, but they will have heard all of you through that process.
Is there gonna be another hearing?
There may be, that's the county commissioner's call. But again, the process is the Hearing Examiner will develop a report, which is her recommendation, that'll go to the county commissioners. You will have a hearing date that you can, or, excuse me, a, thank you, deliberations date, which is where the commissioners deliberate over these things, but they can choose to have a public hearing if they desire. The county commissioners can.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yes, and thanks also for caring enough to share your thoughts, I appreciate that. So, this concludes our hearing this evening on case number APP 25-0001, and we will move on to our next case, which is case number CUP 25-0001. And we will move on to our next case, which is case number CUP 25-0001. And if you all would clear the room as quickly as possible so we can move on and keep, keep our evening as short as possible? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Have to learn how to use this again. It's been a while.
There's a great parking lot outside. You guys can go talk in on. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready.
Evening, Madam Hearing Examiner. For the record, Joseph Foudy, Planner 2 with Kootenay County Community Development. The case before you tonight, CUP 25-0001, titled Belissimo Shelties Dog Kennel. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. A request by the property owner to establish a private commercial dog kennel on a 20-acre parcel of land in the rural zone. Currently, the project proposal is for the breeding of competition canines for compensation. Breeding more than two litters of canines per year. They house the, or did we want to close the door?
Ben's doing it.
Ben's getting it. Okay, thank you. So there's an 864-square-foot accessory pole structure for up to 25 canines that was permitted under RES 231134. The accessory structure, as we just commented on, is for the kennel housing. They have the detached garage for the quarantine area and a puppy room that is located for the main house, also for other purposes for training and so forth. No onsite sales are proposed. All sales transactions occur online. No customer traffic is allowed onsite. The canines will be transported by a third-party air nanny to the customer. There is an existing onsite septic system with a new system proposed solely for the capture of kennel wastewater and an individual well currently serves the property. Individual driveway from the intersection of East Rosemont Drive, Lakes Highway District maintained, public road, and North Sheep Springs Road privately maintained. County aerial map. This is on the, again, like we said, the intersection of Rosemont and Sheep Springs Road, highlighted in red, 20-acre parcel. The site plan, no new structures are proposed. There's a dog run, a kennel. I'm sorry if the image is a little bit hard to see. But there is the main house. There's an aisleway that leads to the accessory structure. And then outside of that, there is the dog run that is existing. They have an existing accessory building. They also have an area for their horses to run. Subject parcel in greater detail here, as you can see there. It is zoned rural, 20 acres in size. The comprehensive plan map does show transitional. It is transitional because it is in the ACI of Athol, the Area of City Impact of Athol. Site photos, this is the accessory structure that was permitted under RES 231134. Inside, you can see the kennels housing some of the canines. And outside on the, to the southwestern, or the image to the southwest here, they have perimeter fencing for horse-type fencing. On the inside, they have the dog run that is fenced in completely and it's locked six feet in height. The establishment of this slide is to establish the fact that it is for compensation for championship-bred lines, canine pedigree. I don't know if you had a chance to study that. But according, I think, to the property owner, the grandfather of the current line is the only Best in Show Westminster of its breed. This was sent to public agencies for comment. The, as we stated earlier, the property owner is working with Penandale Health District to secure a septic permit strictly for the kennel wastewater so they're not using the existing system to go into the individual septic that's onsite. Lakes Highway District and City of Athol and Timberlake Fire all had no concerns with this. Building Division did say that any change of use will require to meet building code requirements. That is a code, condition of approval. And Kootenay County Sheriff's Office Animal Control Division inspected the site January 25th, June 25th, 2025, excuse me. No concerns were identified with that report. The staff analysis, according to Kootenay County Land Use and Development Code, a kennel is defined as such, a total of six or more dogs, six a month, six months of age or over, are kept or maintained by one or more persons. And a commercial kennel is defined as such under Title 8, Section 9.1 of the Land Use Code, breeding for sale of more than two litters, offering a service for compensation and conjunction, raising of competition dogs for purposes of compensation. And they are not proposing a pet shop. We touched on wastewater from, it has been approved by, or they are working with Penandale Health District for approved application. They have a horse-type fencing, provide a 100-by-150-foot fence dog run that's six feet in height. The subject property is heavily vegetated. The combination of these factors will reduce the noise, potential barking, and provide for additional screening from adjacent property owners. Again, no customer traffic will be allowed onsite, so no parking standards were required. And then Kootenay County Sheriff's Office Animal Control did state that they approved the request. A condition of approval will be made in the conditional use permit saying that the applicant will be required to obtain a commercial kennel license from the Board of County Commissioners prior to commencing commercial kennel operations and that they must maintain compliance with Title 5, Chapter 1, which is the Public Safety Code, Animal Control Division. So they must maintain that kennel license each year. Staff recommendation, Community Development recommends approval of this conditional use permit application, and I stand for any questions that you have.
Just a comment. This was a lot of fun in terms of an application to look at versus some of the ones I've done, like cemeteries and other things.
I'm glad I could make it interesting for you.
So, yeah, because I'm a dog lover, so. It's just fun to learn about, you know, how you put together a commercial operation like this. So, no, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Kristi Green. Did we get them on? I have Kristi, Helen, and John. And who wants to speak from the applicant's perspective?
Good evening, Madam Commissioner. My name's John Green, one of the applicants at 32872 North Sheep Springs Road. And we look forward to being able to breed these dogs to send out to, you know, pet families. And we also send them out to service dogs and things like that as well. So we've had, almost half of our dogs have gone out as service dogs now. So we're really excited to see some of that happen as well. As far as the septic system, which he was referring to, that is actually in place. We have the permit is in place now. And we're probably within a couple of weeks of actually getting the inspection done. So that's kind of what I wanted to add on. So we are making the final, final steps.
Okay, good. Do any of these dogs become your family pets too?
We, we have one of them ourself. We're actually two because we just retired one. So yes, we have two. And then, of course, Sparrow will never leave our house, so.
Okay, thanks.
We, we definitely love the dogs. Kristi's had Shelties now for, what, 18 years? So, yeah, it's kind of just growing into something that we can share with everyone else. It's a lot of fun actually seeing the families actually get the dogs and, you know, just grins and they send us back videos of them and stuff like that. It's just wonderful.
Oh, yeah, I did that to my breeder with my dog. Lots of videos. That's what she's doing now. Yeah. I'm just, I'm curious, sorry. Does this breed have a working life besides breeding? I mean, do they...
You mean as far as a working dog?
Yeah.
Yes, so they normally are a herding dog.
Okay.
And so they do tend to try and, you know, push other animals into a, like a, like a, you know, they would have done much. When they were, when they were herding dogs by breed. Come on up. Come on up.
There's agility. There's all kinds of different roles.
Sweetheart, you're not on the microphone.
We need to have you on the microphone.
You can tell them all about it. She's my expert.
Christine Green, Belissimo Shelties. So, yeah, they, they love, this breed is always happy-go-lucky 24/7. And they are extremely intuitive to people, along with other animals. And that's what makes them actually also wonderful service or therapy dogs as well. But as far as working, they're wonderful in agility and scenting and a multitude of different avenues with that. And they're just, I used to be in search and rescue. I was the president of Kootenay County Search and Rescue from 2000 to 2005. And, yeah, I just love that and love giving that to volunteering and doing that program. But watching the dogs work as well in that, and that really kind of helped me get into this a little bit more too. So it was a really nice avenue. But, yeah, they, it's just, it's just wonderful use. They're generally just an all-around dog. They're great for families. They're amazing. They really are amazing.
Better for small areas because they're not quite as big as collie.
So they can get into smaller areas and whatnot as well too. So, yeah, they're just, and they're a strong, healthy dog. I researched all the different breeds 20 years ago and then really got into this and spent, we spent a lot of time with our dogs, puppies.
It took us several years just to be able to find the right dogs to even start the entire process of her.
Every one of our dogs is on our heart. I mean, we don't have children. They are literally our kids. And we treat them as that. And we are very selective with our families who choose our pets. And they're all health-tested. So that was a big thing. Because a lot of people don't know that. They don't understand that that's available.
All the dogs go through genetic testing to make sure that they don't have, like, Collie eye anomaly or some sort of a heart issue. And then they get their joints tested and eyes tested and all that beforehand. So that way we know we're not passing that down to future families.
Right, yeah, so.
You don't see very many Shelties these days.
Don't. So sad. Yeah, there's a lot more over on the East Coast versus West Coast. Yeah, so hopefully we can bring that in. So we're, we're wanting to take dogs, of course, Sparrow is, you know, the, Conrad is his grandfather. It's still the only Sheltie in history to ever won that Best in Show at Westminster. So you've got all these wonderful physical strengths showing champion bloodlines. They've been shown. And then the icing on the cake is our temperament. They're just amazing temperaments. And so it's very, very selective over years trying to get the, just the right temperaments and whatnot. So we're trying to do it right. And it's for pet families. So they're for families, the quality dogs for families, so.
How large is a typical litter?
You know, they can go anywhere from about five to seven.
We've heard of some being ones and twos, but those sound more rare. We've only seen five to seven.
But they're cute puppies.
It's a blessing. I'll show you. And I can have this cuteness, yeah.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Joseph.
I just have one thing to add to that that I left off in the report is that the, the proposal is to have, they have currently 13. They want to have up to a capacity of 25 canines at any given time. Kootenay County Sheriff's Office Animal Control Officer Osborne inspected the site and said that they have the capacity to, or they have the ability to meet that capacity of 25.
Okay. I have one more question. I'm just curious. Yeah, the, the, no, the Greens. The, the nannies, that... What an interesting...
It's a wonderful...
Sorry, but...
So there are several services out there that are pet nannies.
Really?
Basically what happens is we call them up and they come, meet us at the airport, and we provide the dog to them, and they then provide it to the person on the other side of the United States.
So that dog or puppy is literally sitting with that nanny and being tended to all the whole time through.
And, and the weird thing is, the nanny is actually cheaper than you buying the airline to get yourself. I don't know how it works. I think they're getting airline miles or something and using them, but somehow they're getting it cheaper.
So it's a, it's a wonderful service for people to use and stuff, and they're all professional. Yeah, it's wonderful. Yep.
They, yeah, they work well, and we've had two or three people come that are through the same service that basically deliver them.
Nice. Good, okay. Thank you. Do we have anybody on call in? No? Okay. Anything else? All right, then that concludes our hearing this evening on CUP 25-0001.